Call is being ordered. It is six thirty-two. Let's rise for the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Craig here.
Schneider here.
Dolphine here.
Fari.
Yurgis here.
All right, I do have in front of me proper verification of proper meeting notices being posted. Rolls this right into the agenda. Um, I'm aware of two. That's just policy. Uh, I'm aware of two additions to the agenda this evening. They both fall under action item A of staff positions. We've added Brad Basic, high school science, the new hire, and Brett Lopez is a third grade teacher new hire. Other than that, I'm aware of no changes or alterations to the posted agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda but those two additions.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion by Ms. Kwame, seconded by Mr. Fari, to approve the agenda with the aforementioned changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Foes.
Motion carries. Six oh vote. Brings us to the action of the minutes from the regular meeting of Wednesday, May. The open session. Are any noted corrections here or changes on the minutes?
Craig will move for approval.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Brings us to the minutes from the regular meeting, uh, Wednesday, May, in closed session. Any noted changes here?
Craig will motion for approval.
Motion by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve said minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Foes. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Brings us to the minutes from the Personnel Committee. From Monday, June third, twenty twenty-four. It's open and closed notes. Any noted changes here?
I have no noted changes.
I have no changes, so I will move for approval.
I will second. Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Dolphine, to approve as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Foes. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Brings us to board reports. Uh, I do not believe we have any students present, so we'll move forward. Also Waterloo Crew is on the reports, which you have in front of you. I didn't see a representative from Waterloo Crew, but uh, yeah, they were gonna try to send somebody, but they weren't sure, so they did do a write-up just in case somebody didn't get here. Um, so in front of you, you have a page write-up. They just wanted to get in front of you and just talk about what they do and um, get to know, get to know you and those kinds of things, so um, most of you are probably pretty familiar with that, but I thought it was nice that they offered that and they did a really nice job of writing up too, so. All right, any board member commentary or if you can review the write-up and we'll move right along unless someone wants to discuss something. Takes us to the approval of bills and vouchers. We have the Treasurers' report, superintendent's listing of disbursements through May thirty-first, and the district receipts. Are there any unanswered questions at this time on any of the free items that are presented?
There's one item I happened to notice. It was seats at two Jedi virtual on five twenty-eight, thirteen thousand. So this covers what?
That covers the tuition for our students that attend the Jedi Virtual School. So we have a number of students in the district that cover or that attend Virtual School. So Jedi is a consortium, so we use them as a vendor, but technically they're our students. So we get to count them on our state Friday, third Friday count, but then we pay tuition to Jedi for them to be served.
All right.
It's like a collection of schools to run a Virtual School.
So would they, so they would, they would probably be at home for this?
Yeah. Yeah, typically, we, we do do some singleton classes for kids, but the majority of our kids are from home all day.
So they, but they're considered part of the school district, but you have to consider homeschool.
Correct.
All right. I thought that was the case and now I am sure. So I will move to approve all three, uh, items.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Craig, seconded by Ms. Kwame, to approve the Treasurers' reports, the superintendent's listing of disbursements, and the district receipts for the month of May. Are there any other discussion before we vote? That is a roll call vote.
Craig, yes.
I'm a yes.
Schneider, yes. Dolphine, yes.
Fari, yes.
Yurgis, yes.
Motion carries on a seven oh vote. Six oh, excuse me. Thank you for correcting. Can't write it down. All right, we roll into legislative updates. Any legislative updates, board members, or Mr. Henny?
Um, no updates per se, but I did find out today, uh, district officials did get invited to, um, sounds like Jamie Quimby is gonna run for Assembly again. Waterloo alumni and former board member. Uh, it sounds like they're having a gathering for her at the Lake Mills Public Library on June twenty-sixth, starting at five P M. So not that we either endorse or don't endorse candidates, but it's neat to see one of our former graduates running for office and so I thought we'd announce that.
All right. Are there any other announcements this evening? Uh, I will say, behalf of the board and the board members who attended, uh, graduation went very well and we commend the staff for all their planning and efforts to put that commencement event together. It went very well.
Now, I'm gonna send two things around, two. One, um, we got the final copy of the two thousand twenty-four resolutions that Charlie helped pass, so if you're interested in those, I'll send the packet around. And then the other thing, um, I thought would be good for people to see, since we have a lot of new people, is, you know, every year we join the Wisconsin School Board Association, and I think they have a hundred percent of the districts in Wisconsin join. We used to put this on the board agenda years and years and years ago, but at one time the board just said, quit putting that on there because we plan to join, um, so it's really a waste of time. Um, but I, since we had a whole bunch of new people around, I thought it'd be good for you to see, you know, that we do pay to join the W A S B and how much it costs and there's a book of services and stuff in here. Um, so if we ever wanna change that and go back to like approving that every year, we could do that. As of right now, we just automatically renew it, but it wouldn't have to be that way if you guys didn't want to. So I'll send that around too.
Okay. As we circulate that information, we will, uh, roll forward to public input. Uh, is there anyone virtually that would like to provide any input this evening? There are none, and we have no one present. We will, uh, move forward into new business. So we'll roll right into action item A, staff positions, uh, previously mentioned. We've added two, Brad Basic and Brett Lopez. High school science, new hire, and third grade teacher that's also new hire. We have one resignation. I believe in your former packet, you have a copy of said resignation. Are there any questions regarding the proposed staff positions?
I guess I have one.
Will you make your motion? Just on the night custodian, Brian, uh, sort of reducing some time there, or do we need to hire to fill the void, or are we adequately covered with?
Um, we discussed this in the Personnel Committee meeting and we indicated that it's gonna be tight, um, but we're gonna make it work. So at one time Bob was four days a week, and then we bumped him up to five days a week, and now he's gonna go back to four. We've, we've kind of ebbed and flowed that position over the years based on what he wants to work, because there's, there's plenty to do, but we feel fortunate just to have him, so if he wants to go back to four days a week, I think we should let him. Um, he does plan to retire in a year, so we can revisit him again in a year when, when that happens.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Yurgis. Now, is he making a motion to approve staff positions?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Ms. Kwame, to approve staff positions as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Foes. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Brings us to action item B, life insurance renewals. So, uh, surprisingly to me anyway, and we are offered a zero percent increase for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, and it's recommended we approve the W E A life insurance offering for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Any questions or discussion or I goes here?
Are all school districts pretty much rated the same or for life insurance? Would you know?
Um.
I, I don't, it's not based on, there's other demographic things that go into plan, correct?
Yeah, so they, they do an actuarial study, just like health insurance of age of your membership, past claims, those types of things. It's not quite as in-depth, of course, as health insurance, but.
And there's a good chance that, um, careers may make a play in that calculation, but that is.
Careers and size of your employee group, those types of things.
Right.
Any other discussion regards to the life insurance renewal? I'll make a motion to approve life insurance renewal. Is that appropriate? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Mr. Craig, to approve as recommended, the W E A life insurance offering for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Foes. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Brings us to action item C, the Fund Forty-Six establishment. As stated in your former packet, uh, it's recommended that we approve the establishment of a Fund Forty-Six effective with the date of June twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, as noted, there's an initial five-year waiting period to access funds. You know, if you want, if you have questions here, or you wanna elaborate a bit?
Yeah, so basically, um, you know, this, the minus in Fund Forty-Six can only be used for long-range facility improvements. Um, they can't be transferred to any other funds. They have to have their own separate bank accounts. Um, for when you put them in, you've got the five-year clock that starts, which is why you kind of want to, you know, put a little bit of money in, they get that clock going, so you can't touch the funds for five years. Um, it's kind of a savings account for those long-range plans. And what I did for the, um, ten-year facility plan is I took our, um, our current document we've been using for our Billings and Grounds Committee, and then I kind of pulled it out, like, you know, something needs updating for five years, you know, that, you know, year five and year ten and that, so I took the date that we already had, um, and, and affected that out, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, this is really all about maximizing the shared cost formula that we have with the D V I. Shared cost is the amount of expenditures that we spend in a year, then we're aided on those amount of expenditures the following year, right? It's that weird formula that makes no sense to most people, but, um, so what this does is it gives the district a little bit more flexibility. Let's say you want to, you know, on your facilities plan, seven years from now, you're gonna replace a section of the roof. Well, if you start setting money aside for that now, let's say you just stick it into fund balance to save for that roof, you don't get aided on that money. Now, you would, when you spend it to fix the roof, so that one year you would get it. But by establishing this fund, when you set money aside, then you also get aided on that money also. So it's, it's, it's flexibility for the district to kind of decide, um, which is a lot of what we do here in June, when it's at the end of our fiscal year. It's flexibility for us to decide, are we gonna stick it in Fund Forty-Six and then take the aid on it now, or set it aside for later and take the aid on it then? We don't really have a mission in mind, um, we just want the flexibility to be able to do that. This is probably the fifth or sixth time we've put it in front of the board and we've, we never really had a plan the last couple times either, um, so we're just kind of put it on hold, but I think it's time, especially with all the stuff we have going on. You know, you can see with all the stuff in front of you tonight that we have some of that increased flexibility with how we end our fiscal year in terms of, uh, being aided for the following year.
And we don't have to, it's not community hardship now, but, you know, we have to begin to utilize it. It can kind of help smooth out like the real highs or lows, which kind of helps us manage that, so it, I think it's more beneficial.
Yeah, yeah, we put like five hundred dollars in there now just to establish the account and start the bond.
So what determines how much we put in there at the end of the year?
What we decide. We know, well, where things are sitting budget-wise and what we're trying to do, like, if we know that we've got this big project coming up and, um, we want to set that one aside.
So if we're under budget at the end of the year, we just take, we determine, well, put everything that's left into there?
We would be, if that's what you guys chose to do, we, uh, we can do that, yeah. We have to keep it balanced, essentially.
So we can put five hundred dollars in there now and a hundred thousand dollars in there next year. Five years from now, we could spend all of the money that is in there if necessary?
Yeah, and then open, yeah, and, and we have the flexibility.
All we have to do is open it up.
And get that clock started.
Okay. Establish the law. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that's the weird thing about, um, you know, obviously I think it's weird, but about school finance, right? So we're, what, fifteen days from the end of our fiscal year and we, we have a pretty good idea how the budget's gonna end up, but we don't know exactly, and so because you don't have another meeting until July, um, there's a lot of decisions that go into these last couple weeks of the year on how we're gonna close out accounts and sweep accounts, et cetera. And so it's just, it's just another tool to allow us to maximize what we have and what we do here.
Okay, so I know we have to get this done by June, June thirtieth.
There is no deadline for this. I just put the effective date, because, you know, the obvious stage, you have a Fund Forty-Six, and we will affect it today, so I just put that date. I mean, I think I, I know I brought this up to Brian several times, because I've been here, and he's brought it before, but there is no date that we have to start this.
Yeah, you don't, I mean, if we don't do it this month, we can do it next year.
Well, yeah, but I wanna, I wanna get the clock ticking.
Right, but I mean, it's just.
We have until June thirtieth this year to get that started?
If we were going, yeah, for this, this year, yes. Yeah, but it's gotten more approved and, you know, all of the documentation which is in there, so, yeah.
And you only want five hundred dollars this year?
I was saying that as a literal, like, I mean, right, because we have so much, we have a lot of extra right now, we're, we're trying to do the, you know, maximizing everything we have, so that was just a seriously random number.
Okay.
Just letting you know that, like, I'm not going to just pull out three hundred thousand and then make this one negative. That's not, especially because we can't determine finances.
Although if we can find a couple million to put in there, we'll put it in there. But don't hold it crap.
It's just, you can get that start, that clock started.
Is there a minimum? Maybe that's a better question.
I have not seen a minimum. That's why I threw five hundred dollars.
Sure, I didn't, I didn't find one either when I was looking at it.
Yeah, yeah, I want, it's probably like opening up a checking account, five dollars a minimum or whatever, so.
Yeah, the bank might have an account.
Exactly, I'm a minimum.
But the Fund Forty-Six doesn't.
Correct.
Yeah.
But I could add that through the Facility Grounds Committee, you, I guess, in terms of, it's not establishing a long-term plan, and we've asked to work with that and to list out all these things, so it's not a big surprise that one day, hey, we gotta replace, I don't know, you know, the pool is always a discussion of trying to plan and be out in front of it as much as you can. So this plays nicely with that.
Yeah, and the, the ten-year plan, obviously, is not written, so I'm, you know, best guess estimate, or, you know, the court will be at the time, or anything like that, but it at least helps to anticipate the coming.
No, it made sense to me. I saw a lot of other school districts were doing it, and I was just wondering why we're redoing this too.
Yeah. The whole thing will.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it, some of it comes down to, we don't really have a lot of extra money to set aside, but some of it comes down to, we never really had a serious plan for it, and, and we don't necessarily yet, but if we ever want to, we gotta get started.
That sounds good to me. Any discussion, or would you like to put into a form of a motion?
I'll make a motion to act the Fund Forty-Six is set for the status of Fund Forty-Six.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Fari, seconded by Mr. Dolphine, to establish the Fund Forty-Six effective June twelfth, twenty twenty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Roll into action item B, the Cobus and Bus contract. Again, in your packets, you have a sample of the contract. It's noted, we are in the third year, and our negotiating contract in the third year has a six percent price increase. So we, to secure that, it's recommended that we, uh, approve that contract this evening. Uh, and as a reminder, in the spring of twenty twenty-five, we will again be in negotiation with the Busson to establish a new contract as we move forward, and we have the option of a three- or a five-year contract at that point. Any discussion in regards to the bussing contract? Have we seen any other bids?
We will go ahead and next year.
Okay.
Um, we'll, sorry, excuse me, check with other vendors at that time, yeah. So this was kind of our third year of that, that three-year option, um, but yeah, we'll do that again now.
Have we been with Cobus in for how long, Brian?
Well, we were with Nora Magr and Weed Care for twenty or thirty years, and then he transitioned his service to Cobus in
oh, six, seven years ago, so. And we really, was the, I guess I heard less, and we went for spellboard. Bussing was rather challenging, and they get your man buses for all of our extracurriculars and things.
Extracurriculars remain challenging, um, but I don't talk to anybody at any other schools that doesn't have the same problems, um, so changing providers or doing something different probably isn't gonna alleviate that particular problem. It might get a better price, but you're still gonna have difficulties with extracurriculars, because it's about drivers. They don't have the, the drivers, and it's specifically about extracurricular trips that leave during the P M route times, because all their drivers are on P M rides. So if they can leave forms, why you see the kids getting out a little earlier from time to time now, um, or after, then to avoid that problem.
Any other questions or discussions?
I'll approve the Cobus and contract as presented.
I'll second. Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Kwame, seconded by Mr. Fari, to approve the Cobus and contract as presented for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes. Motion carries on a six oh. Brings us to the outdoor master site plan. So you have, I believe, in front of you, uh, and in your packet, just the one in front of you is colored, um, some renderings of the outdoor facilities master site plan. So Kramer Brothers is putting together a budget for the project. Uh, again, as we entered into this, we were committing to nothing other than getting a plan and determining what we could do, what the options were to best fit the facilities for our high school sports on our current route.
Yeah, so on that picture, that red line that shows some additional fencing, that's, that should have been removed. Um, we asked them to show us what it looked like if we put a fence around our playground, and that wasn't exactly what we meant. They could put some other stuff down in the south along Porter Street, but that, that red line should not be in there, but everything else is reflective of what you guys planned in the library that night.
One of those Kramer gonna have their process and stuff.
We have those for you tonight. We're gonna go through them in closed session, because, you know, there'll be some competitive bidding um, processes coming out soon, and I think the board wants to maintain strategic advantage on that, so, yeah, we'll go through those in closed session tonight.
All right. Do we see anything here that's outside of the realm of what we discussed in the, in the library? Or just general comments?
Oh, I'm glad to hear that fencing wasn't gonna be put in. Is, um, the space in between the softball field and the baseball stadium, is that concrete? It's dry on there, it's concrete, um.
Some form of hard stone.
Yeah, but it could be.
Blacktop, concrete, something like that.
Could be blacktop, could be gravel, could be grass.
Okay.
You have, you have a choice.
Notice on the, uh, the more zoomed out rendering here, is this orange spot here our agriculture classroom?
Yeah.
Okay, that's outside of the football fence, I guess?
It's kind of right on top of the football fence, so maybe half in, half out?
Was, was, I guess for some reason in my mind, I was thinking it was gonna be inside the football fence, but I'm happier to see it over here. Is that where it's supposed to go?
We're gonna scoot it to the east as far as we can, um, but there's some underground drainage culverts there, um, sort of right in front of the handicap parking shots that we don't wanna cover, but we'll come right up against those to keep as much space for the fans that like to scan and watch the football game as possible.
I like that.
Yeah, it's probably actually drawn just a little bit too far to the east, but
looks like they got it right at the edge of the pavement.
Yeah, they got it right on the edge of the pavement. It'll be a little further west. It, the, the, literally the center of the fence will probably be, or the fence will run right down the center of the building.
Fresh my memory, the upper all the way north, is that the potential bus garage?
Yeah.
Yeah. Bus garage and some parking. All right, any, anything else anyone wants to discuss? It's hard to see. I'm assuming they have fences on the edge of the field. Looks like there's one on the baseball, but I can't hardly see on the softball.
There is, yeah. Fences all the way around the outside and then some safety netting and stuff in some spots as well.
They've got a labeled as football field, but do we have significance, real estate to potentially put a soccer field on there?
Um, that's gonna be big enough to paint a soccer field. So you can, they're gonna provide the green space and we can paint it as a soccer field or a football field.
Did I have a fencing thing? Is there, is the plan to put permanent fencing around both softball and baseball field? The whole way around, or just the back stops?
No, that's, fence all the way around is drawn into the plan.
Okay.
So they, they, they kind of gave us everything, and then, you know, you guys have to decide what you wanna take on.
So what'd you say you want? So what'd you say, you want a lottery chip? I mean, I, I think it looks good as, as far as our planning.
Looks like what we discussed.
We've maximized the use of our space. I don't see any other way that I could figure or economically improve our grounds.
I would agree.
So I don't know that we have action to take at this point, but there was more of a discussion. Is there any further discussion or should we move on?
You wouldn't necessarily have to do it tonight, but I don't think it would be the worst idea if the board either approved or didn't approve the site plan so that a year from now or two years from now or five years from now, there's different people sitting here or whatever, you know, we can look at and say, we had a, a board approved site plan. It doesn't mean you can't change it. It just means at some time six or seven people looked it over and said, yeah, that looks like a nice plan.
I think that something to this magnitude needs community input, like ultimately we're looking at a plan that would impact our district financially very significantly and I would hesitate to vote to approve the plan without discussion, I guess, amongst they be, they will be the ones funding this plan.
Sure, I can understand that sentiment and I can also understand Mr. Henning's thought. Here's a plan. Approving the plan doesn't mean we've spent anything other than what we've already approved and paid for the plan, but, um.
I just think of all the meetings that were presented to the community when we built the field house and that was an additional building. That wasn't a complete review of our property.
Essentially, though, doing it without the plan, any other work between the future if we need to be, kind of starting point for I guess the softball field that's going on.
Right. Any other board members on the way in?
Well, I think we have a compliance issue that we need to be addressing and just approving the site plan as we start to move forward because we gotta do something about it.
Yes, it's a good point.
I'll make a motion to adopt the plan of beginning as a master plan.
Just to, to approve the site.
Site plan as presented.
Would you amend that to, uh, it stated we got this fence, but we expect that it will be in there?
Yeah.
By the playground? I think everyone agrees that should be there.
Yeah.
So is there a second to that motion?
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Mr. Farley to approve the Waterloo School District Master Plan dated, uh, June third of twenty-four with the noted change or correction of moving the fence by the elementary playground. Any further discussion? We go to a vote. All those in favor of approval of the site plan?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion will carry on a five oh one vote. Okay, brings us to the agricultural building and outdoor classroom. We have in front of you, hopefully, a couple variations. It's, uh, an elevation of the proposed egg classroom building and a floor plan. I believe that should coincide with what was in the board packet. As stated in the board informer packet. Looking to move forward on this, the FFA alumni has agreed to raise a hundred thousand dollars to support to the cost of the building. And it's, uh, to bolster the egg program in Waterloo with, uh, building our classroom. It's recommended to approve plans and costs for the building as presented so the project can get started as quickly as possible. Additional questions? I'm sure Mr. Henning can field questions.
Yeah, so I have a copy of the, a contract for Cleary which has the pricing. We're at two fifty-six for the concrete work in the building and then we would ask for, um, forty thousand, not to exceed for electrical and plumbing. We're gonna do those contracts separate from Cleary, um, so that we can avoid some of the Davis Beacon pricing, um, things and save some money. Uh, so you will see, um, bids for those, uh, coming up. But again, we're, we've had some discussion with contractors and we believe, you know, that will come in under forty thousand for those two things. So, um, two fifty-six for the building, forty for electrical and plumbing, um, which we will use as our grant dollars to pay for, uh, and then the alumni will pay for a hundred thousand of it. So I can send that around.
Total price tag is three hundred thousand ish.
Little under, yep.
And we're getting a hundred thousand from, you have a pay, you have fundraising and then we're getting two hundred from this, this grant?
Yep.
A grant? We don't have to pay that back?
No.
We don't have to pay for this building at all?
Wow. That, you know, it's federal money you pay for it somewhere.
Yeah, no, no, what I, that, you know, I, I, I know.
Yeah, but. Okay. Yep, nobody's taxes are going to raise. Nothing's coming out of, you know, our regular yearly budget.
And if we don't build it, we get zero grant money.
We would still have the grant money, um, with some limitations on what it could be spent for and we have to get it spent in the next two and a half months.
You don't have a plan for it?
So we sort of had this earmarked for the building, um, but yeah, we're not gonna give it back if we can help it anyway.
Just for a point of discussion, what would be other things that the fund would be used?
Um, so it has to be academic and curriculum related for the most part, so.
So no softball field?
No, we did, we did try on that. It cannot be softball field, but you know, for, for example, we need to, um, revamp our math curriculum in a couple of years. We could, you know, buy a curriculum a couple of years early or something like that. Those tend to be a couple hundred thousand dollar expenditures. Um, I mean, there's, there's other things, but it has to be academic and curriculum related.
Uh, so what features would be in this building? There's a concession stand, is that right?
Yep, so on one of the pages, there's a floor plan. So this would be your concession stand and this.
On the right.
Yeah, this would need a ticket.
What would that, concessions?
Yes. This would be, uh, utility closet and this would be all classroom animal space. And of course, the FFA runs the concession stand also, so other than the little bit that we would take tickets maybe on a Friday night, it's pretty much an agriculture FFA building.
Where's our, like, concession table or counter to work off of?
Again, this is just a floor plan. It doesn't really show any interiors. It's gonna be a finished interior space then.
Yeah, so some of the interior design, uh, Mr. Chopen is gonna do with his, uh, buildings, classes, techs or fall. So we have discretion on how to lay that out and do that.
Okay, it was like, I'm not saying where I'm gonna be buying my popcorn.
So what do they have animals in this thing?
Here, right?
Yes, under, underneath the cows and sheep and goats.
There is a dividing, right?
Yep.
Are they any kind of permanently like?
No, they would just come for the units that they're studying oats and stay for a little while then go, go back to the farm. So if they're doing a, a swine unit, they might bring a a sow in, barrel, little piglets and then send them home.
How's gonna be fun to build one?
Uh, it takes sixty days to get state plans approved. We hope to be building it within sixty days or less.
What percentage of our students participate in our agriculture program?
I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but it's between that and tech ed, there are two most utilized programs. So I would, I would go out on a limb and say that most of our kids at some point in time during their high school career take an agriculture course.
Tell us about the new instructor.
Uh, the new instructor is coming to us from, uh, Columbus. She will have a year of experience under her belt. Um, she comes from a family of educators. Um, grew up on a farm, still involved heavily in, um, agriculture, showing and horse pulling and those kinds of things. Um, she specifically mentioned that her driving card to come here was that she saw us as a district investing in agriculture like this and that's one of the main reasons why she chose to come here.
Any other questions or discussion? Said agricultural classroom.
Sean, do you have any, um, numbers in front of you about utilization of egg courses? That's what John Scott, sorry.
No, can you hear me?
Yes.
No, I don't have the exact numbers. I will say that, um, our FFA group had ninety-six students in it this past year. Um, we do have to deny some sections of egg in high school because there's only so many sections we can teach. So as Mr. Henning said, it is one of the more common classes students like to bake that with their tech guys. I don't have the numbers, so about just over a third, probably about thirty-five percent are in FFA or in high school.
And if you'd like to add, run those numbers to my own, give them to the board if that's something you're interested in.
Just would be good data when people ask why we're spending the money, maybe to, to provide the community to say, hey, we have a great student enrollment in this program and we're trying to support it. So yeah, Sean, if you would send it, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I can move to my right.
Well, I'm in favor of it, so I'll move to proceed. You have two hundred thousand dollars of money for the project. You got alumni group that's stepping up for the other hundred. Say vote for it.
I'll say. Okay, we got a motion on the floor by Mr. Creve, seconded by Mr. Farley to approve the moving forward of the agricultural building slash outdoor classroom. I'd like to move to a, whoa, hold on a minute.
Creve, yes.
Bobby, yes.
The Dolphin, yes.
Gar, yes.
Garries, yes. Alright, then I will state. So the motion will carry on a five oh one vote. Moving right along, action item G, the second reading of the four thousands and eight thousand policy. Again, it's a second reading. I don't believe we had any noted changes here in the four thousands or eight thousands. Any discussion on four thousands or eight thousands policies? Again, second reading and just as a refresher, as we get down to the end, remember none of the, we approved the policies in the first reading and the second reading form and then we, to adopt all policies, we do that at one time when they're all done completely. So I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of four thousands and eight thousand.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Ms. Quoney to approve second reading of the four thousands and eight thousand policies. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries of a six oh. Brings us to action item H, the first reading of the two thousands and the five thousands. Any discussion here? On the two thousands and the five thousands.
I did bring in a couple of extra packets, so if somebody wants paper copies of those, I have them with tonight.
I can speak from the policy committee path or chair. Again, a lot of these are gonna be driven, the five thousand certificate, they are very driven through state statutes, uh, pretty straightforward. They all align nicely and consistently as you would expect across multiple platforms. We didn't have a lot of questions or edits in the, in the again, there's a lot more here than we currently have and that's a relative term you can say, but I think it, it, uh, provides a very good direction for the district.
It's now a real exciting reading. I've read as many of them as the body and mind can endure. They're comprehensive, of course, which you expect to have for the policies that you're purchasing and have been developed that feel they will mean our district needs well. Of course, it takes some training for the staff and administration to zero in on some of the nuances. But I think this is a good move to vote. It would be a good move to vote in the affirmative of adopting this.
I'll make a motion to approve the first readings of the two hundred and five thousand or two thousand and five thousand.
Alright, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Mr. Farley to approve the first readings of the two thousands and five thousand policies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so vote. Roll into you action item I, the first reading of other policies. Uh, we've got some in the three thousands, seven thousands.
There's a eight thousand and a nine policy, oh yeah.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Henning, these are some that we had, uh, reworked?
Yeah, we had reworked them and we're sort of waiting for some input from, uh, Scott Brown from Neola and so this just catches us up with the rest of those sections and and that's, that's our, you know, the second reading of these two groups next meeting, but then we are done with all of the policies and so then we'll have a vote in theory here coming up in July to establish all of the policies and as the news set for the district going forward. And Scott has put his notice in as a CEO of Neola. And a year from now, he said, uh, two years is enough for him and he's gonna keep seven schools to redo policies and he would like to keep Waterloo if he'll have them, he said. to redo policies and he would like to keep Waterloo if he'll happen, he said.
What's Niola?
That's the organization that, uh, we work with, that put these together, that's a company.
Thank you, what is there, how many schools in the state is it? Eighty-five percent, ninety percent of schools in the state that are using Niola as a policy resource?
In the majority, schools over like a thirteen state area.
And as part of the services, you want here when we approve this, but they, they go through and they look and if you look at the policies, um, the policies, you know, they're, on the legal, they are recording this, they go through, some of them are just along with the state statutes and all the things and they have, keep track of their uh, revisions, every time is revised and debates and keeps us up to speed. Our current policies are a number of them, but it is, it's the current, current, so, part of the service we purchase. Well, I hear any discussion, does anyone wanna put forward a motion?
I'll make a motion to our first readings of other policies.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurkis, seconded by Mr. Farre to approve the first reading of, uh, labeled other policies for your informer packet, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, six oh one vote. Brings us to the action item J, the DPI five-year self-evaluation of pupil non-discrimination. As stated in your informer packet, every five years, we've got a conduct to self-assessments. Uh, we need to approve this for requirement of DPI. It's recommended that the board report is presented, is there any questions or discussion on the seventh report?
Alright, so move for approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got Mr. Crave moving for approval with second by Mr. Yurkis. All those in favor of approving the DPI five-year self-evaluation of pupil non-discrimination?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries on the six oh one. Brings us to discussion items, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four nursing report. In the packet, we have the school nursing report. Much data, it's prepared by Nurse Sarah. Any questions regarding the provided report? No. Do you prefer Susan to refer to her as a expert?
No, I have a different, different report.
Yeah, we obviously think very highly of Nurse Sarah, she does a excellent job and she does a very thorough report, uh, at the end of the year, so you can see just about everything that she did, um, at the end of the year and it's nice to kinda get that summary in June each year, it's all, I think boards have appreciated that, hopefully you do too.
Yes. So when we look at the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calls, you elaborate, we wanna decrease our personal conviction waivers by at least four percent, elaborate on that thing, what that means?
Yep, so just because we have ninety-nine percent or one hundred percent of immunization compliance doesn't mean that everybody has their immunizations, it just means they either got their immunizations or they signed the waiver to not get immunizations under the personal conviction clause in the statute. So, we're I can't remember if she put that in her report or not. I would say we're somewhere around sixty percent um, of students are immunized, about forty percent sign the personal conviction waiver. Now, that doesn't mean that they're not immunized, the forty percent of the kids are not immunized. It just means they might not wanna report it, so out of that forty percent, some of those still could be immunized. But there's a large percentage of kids that aren't immunized. Oh, yeah, I don't remember if she had that number in.
She goes, and she says our compliance rate is ninety-nine point seven, students who meet minimum requirements are ninety-two percent, students who have vaccines, five, health waivers, zero, religious waivers, one, personal convictions, forty-eight.
Okay, there you go, there's the hard numbers, don't listen to my numbers.
It's, uh, page, uh, five twenty-eight, I forgot your page.
I'm up to a proof, no, we don't have to prove it.
Nope, forget this, let's discuss it. Alright. Please pass along our thanks of the very thorough report to Nurse Sarah, Mr. Henry. Alright, moving right along, discussion of the redefining ready board retreat, which is slated for June twenty-sixth, with Scott Carr versus Sue Two. Again, hopefully your calendars are set, twenty-six from three to six thirty P M. I'll let the top secret Charlie's cheese tasting room.
Alright, so as far as I know, it's still available, I'll, uh, if it isn't, we do have the option for the farm office, uh, conference room. At this time, we plan on the cheese tasting room, so if you go down Parky Road and the cheese factory is on your right, which would be the south side of the road, you go to the east parking lot and enter the lower sidewalk that takes you into the cheese, lower level tasting room.
Is it gonna say cheese tasting or money also?
Yeah, it's gonna say that, it's gonna say cheese tasting there.
No, but the wooden doors have a gravy on it.
Oh, that's
Gravy, but it's cheese.
Charlie's secret.
Fairly, fairly polite.
Yeah, I'll, maybe I'll stick a saw or something there or sign or something.
Some balloons, party's here, kind of thing.
Need a tray.
Policy meetings. Yeah, yeah.
Alright, thank you for that, Mr. Crave. Hopefully that still works for everyone.
Yes.
Perfect. Alright, I will, uh, get you through that agenda items, I'll make a motion that we move into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five, parent one C and E for the items listed for the agenda. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Seconded by Mr. Yurkis. And that is the roll call vote?
Crave, yes.
Tommy, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Dolphin, yes.
Harvey, yes.
Yurkis, yes.
Alright, let the record show it's seven thirty P M and we are now in a closed session, we'll take a brief recess to allow cameras to be.